Good evening. This is the planning board Town of Carver meeting at April 1st, 2014, at 7:00 PM, and we're downstairs tonight. If we could please stand to pledge allegiance. All right, under new business tonight, we have Borrego Solar Systems, Rocky Meadow Development Corporation, Zero Purchase Street, discussion and possible vote on application for minor modification of a site plan for installation of ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility originally approved on December 15th, 2011, and modified on October 16th, 2012, May 23rd, 2013, and January 14th, 2014. A copy of the proposed modification is available for inspection upon request at the office of the town planner during regular business hours.
If I may, Mr. Chair, before they make their presentation, I think a lot of credit has to go to the residents in Borrego and the new town administrator for coming up with what I'm told and believe is an acceptable revision to the plans, and one that Borrego can move forward, the town can hopefully benefit from additional taxes, and hopefully the residents are protected. So I think Rich is going to outline what those are.
Right. What I'm showing you first is what you recently approved, which was a berm, double-rolled planted evergreens, and a double roll of white pine in front of it, and a foot-wide solid screening fence in specific areas. The rise plan, and what color on this is just what the changes are, the berm's been extended, sort of curled around here and curled around here. The fence along the front, the screening fence, has been raised to being 12-foot high, and a double roll of linlun cypress has been planted along in here. Chain fence has been pulled basically along the fire access road to delineate where the fire access road is. We previously had it marked with bayberry shrubs, but it was decided that it'd be more defined that way. And the fire department has reviewed and approved this layout.
And the gate?
The gate had formerly been as the property line. That's been pulled back a couple hundred feet. That's about just the changes. So it's additional screening, vegetative screening, additional berm screening, a higher solid fence.
I can say that I did give these plans to the deputy fire chief, and he had one question about the all-surface access now that the gate's pushed back, and he was fine with it. Rich gave him an answer, and the deputy said he was fine with these changes. It protects the public. I can also tell you that, and maybe Borrego wants to speak to this. Jared here?
Yeah.
A little bit about the negotiations with the neighbors. I know the neighbors had nominated Mr. Hoffman as the representative, and I saw, I got an email from him saying that these were acceptable. So that's what I know.
Anybody have any questions on the board here?
I do. If I could direct these to Borrego Solar, I have in my hand an agreement that was sent to Purchase Street Solar Butters, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Milonowski, the town administrator.
Okay.
Privet settlement discussion and further amendments of solar plans. And this was dated March 20th, 2014. Specifies the increase of the quantity of solar panels on the site, also the increase of buffering that was negotiated between the residents and yourself. And also, which I think was a wonderful gesture by Borrego, a pilot, a tax agreement with the town for a computer.
It's on number two, Mr. Sinclair.
Yep.
It said Borrego also commits to negotiating a cost-share donation to the Carver Technology Fund upon approval of the changes.
So I was wondering if you'd be able to speak to those issues at hand, so that way, I think it's important that the public understands that the residents in Borrego worked, where the town administrator worked hard at this, and there was more buffering that was involved. You're also out looking for an increase of the amount of solar panels that are on the site, but still staying in the footprint. And speak about the technology fund. I think that's important.
Yeah, sure. Jared Conover here at Solar. What would have been discussed is, you're exactly right, Mr. Sinclair, we pulled the setback from the great metal lines back 200 feet, and had submitted a few weeks ago for our building permit based on that plan, and the plan that was approved that Rich talked about at the outset of the meeting back in January. And everything, you're correct, is still within that footprint that was permitted, but within that footprint, the roads have been tightened slightly, and so the panels are a little bit more dense, but within that same footprint. One of the items that we did agree to, as you read from the letter, is the cost-share agreement negotiation with the town in relation to the Carver Technology Fund, which is underway right now. Jack and Mr. Hunter and Mr. Milonowski and I met with our CFO last week when he was in town. We were, of course, scrambling to get the dimensions and the screening and the changes memorialized on these plans and get that agreed to within the 30-day appeal period on the initial building permit based on that January plan, and haven't worked out all the exact dollars and cents of that technology fund donation because we were under the gun to kind of get this plan done during the 30-day window. And the discussions are ongoing with Mr. Hunter and with Mr. Milonowski about the exact structure and, you know, when the payments are going to be made, how much they are, when they are, how frequently, or whether it's one time. All those things are ongoing, as are the pilot discussions.
Great. I think that's a nice mitigation, and I thought that was very well done. I don't know who came up with it, but I think it was very well done.
I'll be straight there.
Just for full disclosure, I did meet for the board, I did meet with the town administrator earlier today to discuss this, because I had initially had some problems with going back and forth, and, you know, they came in, and we had approved one plan, then we made a modification, and then they're in front of us again. Speaking with the town administrator specifically on this issue, there was a couple of things that bothered me, because they were increasing the density of the actual quantity of solar rails. So that bothered me. Knowing that they weren't exceeding the footprint, and they were over-exceeding more buffer than what was screened and negotiated by the residents, I thought that was good. But the thing that tipped me off the most was is that this was done 100% with the residents in Borrego and the town administrator, which I thought was very well done. I think that with allowing a little bit more of the solar panels on the site allows for that technology fund. That technology fund will help a lot for this town, a town that's very well strapped financially and stuff. I thought it was a great mitigation by all people concerned. I thought that was great. We got more buffering than we wanted from the beginning. I thought that was good. So I commend all parties. That's been an ongoing process on this. I thought it was very well done. I do have to ask you in full disclosure, because it's been an issue that's come up a couple of times, and the new town administrator actually brought it up to me last week. I'm going to be very blunt. I own an electrical contractor firm in the town of Plymouth. Have you ever contracted with me Borrego solar contractor with my firm, Williams Sinclair Electric, in any means? Have you ever paid me any monies at all?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Thank you very much. Also, for the record, I'm a licensed electrical contractor in the state of Massachusetts. I own a master's license. I also own a journeyman's license. And just for the record, I do not, and I am not, a solar engineer. That is for the record. I'm going to clean it up today. I thank you for all your help. I thank the residents for their help.
Thank you, if I may.
Sure.
If I may. What is the percentage indifference between the very original layout that we approved way back two years ago and this one here? Megawatt, what is the difference in size?
You know, that predates my involvement in the project a little bit. There was initially a second array that I know was involved in this. Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, I think the question is from the December 2011 decision. It was at 1.1 megawatt?
That's right.
And what's this now?
This is almost exactly 1 megawatt, even if it's 1.1.
Okay. So it was 1.1 years ago, originally.
So it's about 90 kilowatts less than that.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to know that from my own knowledge, but thank you. I wish you well, and I'm delighted that everybody got together and approved this. Good luck.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
We've gone above and beyond to meet everybody's goals as far as working together.
Although this is, Jack, what was he going to say?
No, no, no.
Although this isn't a public meeting, if somebody wanted to speak briefly, nobody can. All I can say is I'm happy that this has finally come about. I'm happy to see that the neighbors have gotten together with Borrego to work out this deal. I had hoped that this would have happened right at the very beginning, but it's taken this long, and I guess people realize that it would be better to work together than to, and to try to buffer the project than to, just to let this thing go on and on forever. And so I'm happy that it's finally come to a conclusion, and I hope that everyone is happy with this that lives around the project. With nothing else...
I took the liberty of drafting a decision because I know that the town administrator wanted this. If you could expedite this, I'm sure everybody does. And it's, I only know Mr. Sinclair wanted to add something to it, but essentially, it's very similar to the decision made in January. I just updated what happened here. I probably had, I took the liberty of saying you were voting in favor, but you guys can deal with that. And I know Mr. Sinclair wanted to talk about this letter.
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just have this document that I referenced added to our documents in the decision. It was something that I, when I spoke to the town administrator, he said that would be good to have added to our documents as our decision. So I think it is a real good idea. It does show cooperation between the residents and the developers, so I think it's important to have that. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minor modification for Borrego Solar as specified in the plans and the information that we received today.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Stay. So it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Welcome to Carver.
All right. Under new business, we have a receipt of plans, Clark Griffith, Form A on Center Street.
Mr. Chair, I will have to excuse myself from this hearing, as the company that I own has done in contract with Clark. Just have a minute here.
Don't go too far, Will. It'll be short. Mr. Chairman, we're only receiving the plans today.
That's right.
We're not asking for endorsement. It's a very complicated Form A. If you want to take a look at it now, we can do it later. Mr. Griffith is supervising, with the five new lots. I think only one of them is buildable, and the rest are the hogs and a pumping house and his existing house. So I'd ask, today I emailed the engineer at GAF to kind of color-code a copy for presentation to you. So I went through it with him. I finally got it, but as you can see, and you're a surveyor, Mr. Chairman, so I'll let you tackle this one, but it's a little complicated to understand. It's exactly what he wants to do here, so.
Yeah, it could use a little explanation, I suppose.
Yeah. We'll get to that, but that'll be considered for endorsement on April 15.
Okay. So we have to schedule that for a meeting, or that's?
No, it's the 15th.
It's the 15th? Okay. All right. Under old business tonight, at 7:15, and it's after 7:15, we have a public hearing. Shory Precast Concrete, 334 Cramont Street, special permit site plan review with the discussion and a possible vote.
Mr. Chairman, in your pack, as you know, we had the site visit with the Conservation Commission, which I thought was quite successful, and a couple of butters were there. We, as always, have asked the engineer at GAF to respond to all the department head comments and our engineering. Sean's in the background. Why are you doing way back there?
Hi.
I'm in a seating today.
And you'll see the response and Sean's response to the revised plans, which maybe the best thing in this case would be to have Shory show what they've accomplished, and then have Sean comment on that. Let me see, where do you want to go?
That sounds good.
Okay. I'm Bill Madden from GAF. Paul Matos is also with me. He's a project engineer on the project. As Jack pointed out, we did have that onsite meeting on the 25th, I believe it was. It was a joint meeting between ConCon Planning. I think it was fairly productive in nature, gave everybody a good opportunity to look at the site and see what we have planned to do out there. You might recall the initial review letter that Sean put together. There was several items on drainage. Paul will talk about those. There were several items on landscaping as well. Those are really the two fundamental things. A couple of things that I was involved with, there was a discussion at one point in time about making sure that we touch base with the plumbing inspector on various elements of the building program once the building permit gets applied for. I had a discussion with him. We talked about the bathroom locations in the building. We talked about the floor drains in the garage doors and piping those to the, basically, a holding tank at the rear of the property. We actually designed it and put it out there behind the back of the building. So we showed that on the plan. It wasn't shown on the original plan, but he and I had a very good discussion. We're on the same page 100%. And I think when we come forward with the building permit application, everything should be fine. But that was really the, my limited involvement since the last time that we met. Paul took care of the drainage, and as you know, we staked out various features in the field. We looked at where things were. Didn't really, I think everybody was relatively satisfied with what was out there. Didn't hear too much feedback on those. So with that, I'll let Paul discuss what was done on the drainage, since those were the major elements of the plan changes.
Paul Matos at GAF Engineering. Changes that we took care of on drainage to address some of Sean's comments from Boston O'Neil was, he was concerned with some of the exposed soils that were here, where our stockpile storage materials were for the precast manufacturing structures in this area along here, and also the access roads were proposed as just gravel roads. So we've modified those to be recycled asphalt surfaces on the access roads that go around the entire building. Then also, the drainage basin here was modified to include a long sediment for bay right along the easterly side of that access road. So that provided some treatment of the storm waters, and then it would overflow into our infiltration basin that we have designed here. On the west side of the property, we had this detention basin that was originally connected to the drainage system and the access road. We got a riser pipe there. After further investigations, we determined that there was really, the pipes were, the inverts on the plant indicated that the water was leaving our site, but the inverts are not correct in the field. They're sloped the wrong way, and they're actually coming onto our property in here. So we modified our drainage systems to account for the small increase in roadway surface that's draining into our new infiltration basin that we designed here. We also provided a sediment for bay here at the end of our grass, quadic grass rail, and we have a sediment for bay here for those existing catch bases there. Those existing catch bases are being modified. We're actually raising the pipes up and making it work the correct way it's supposed to be working. Those are all the changes that we did for drainage. That addressed a lot of Sean's comments, and then there were some minor landscaping changes that we did. We changed some of the trees. This afternoon, we did get a second review letter from Sean with six comments. I talked to him this afternoon.
It's in your pack.
I talked to him this afternoon, and a lot of these comments, I believe we have addressed on the phone. As it relates to question number two, he talks about the infiltration trenches that we showed, stone trench in the bottom of our infiltration basins. That was there just to help infiltrate the water. Typically, when you construct an infiltration basin, sometimes the soil gets compacted and limits your infiltration rates that you're designing for. So we figured that the stone trench there would help maintain that infiltration rate that we're looking for. Because we didn't have the two-foot groundwater separations and have to discuss it with Sean, we're going to eliminate those infiltration trenches, but we're going to keep the riser pipes still there, because those riser pipes are there for emergency purposes, and those are set to be above our estimated 100-year flood elevations in these ponds. For comment number three, you wanted us to modify the TSS removal calculations for two of the basins, which I have, and I have with me, so I can provide those to you tonight. And then for landscaping comments, you talked about the Bradford Pier, an invasive plant in some northeastern states. In Massachusetts, they're not in an invasive plant yet, so we'd like to keep them, but if it's something that we have to work out and specify a different trade, we're willing to do that. It's not a big issue. And then there's a red maple that we have underneath the power lines here. Now, we'll just relocate that in the field. Again, it's not a big issue for us. And the last comment that Sean brought up was about eliminating this eastside sidewalk on the side of the office building to provide more landscaping. The reason why we're providing that sidewalk there is because the plant manager will be in this building, and he'll be most likely coming out the side door here and going right into the plant. So that's the reason why we provide the sidewalk there. Again, that's something we could probably modify in the field and provide the minimal amount of sidewalk we need, and maybe increase that landscaping buffer. Those were the changes that we made on the plan as it relates to all the responses and reviews that we did get from various boards, from various boards in town departments. If anybody has any questions, feel free to answer.
Hey, thank you.
Might have Sean.
Yeah, I was going to ask if Sean might have some comments.
Paul, did you, as far as comment one regarding the retaining wall, you mentioned just making that modification in the future to accommodate the back slope.
We talked about this in the office, me and Bill, and we're thinking that during construction, if we have to provide some kind of sheeting here to help stabilize that slope while the wall's going in, that's something that we're willing to do.
Okay. I was fine with everything that Paul said about his approach to addressing our comments. Just want to mention the Cal Ripare made, the U.S. Forest Service, we give a month.
How could that be?
I don't know how it is.
They're everywhere.
Yeah. So at this point, basically, I had a couple of recommendations if you decide to approve it. I talked about this with Jack in the field, that I'd suggest that during construction, particularly with infiltration systems, that they be inspected when they're excavated, just like you would with a septic system, because they rely entirely upon water going back into the ground. So I'd suggest that when the systems are excavated, an inspection is done, and, you know, preferably if somebody would take a look at the back fill in the final condition. Obviously, make sure that, as Paul pointed out, the soils aren't compacted, and then the vegetation's grown in. It helps open up the soil pores and allows the water to drain through. And then obviously, that the erosion sedimentation controls are in place. Those will help protect the basin and all the rest of the sites under construction, keep silt and sediment out of there. So those are the basic elements of a condition or conditions that I'd suggest that you incorporate in your decision.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Who you, hey, Sean. Just because I don't have a pulley to run it up. You want to draw it?
Nah, it's all right.
I know when we were out, and we were walking the site, there was one of the drainage areas over on this site, if I have it my place correctly here, that looked like it wasn't draining all. There was still standing water. Did you talk about that? Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah. No, it was discussed out there. At the time, we believe that, well, Paul was stating that he believes the sediment has been kind of falling in that air, which is easy to believe when you looked at it. And it wasn't indicative of what they found in the test pits, where they actually determined where groundwater was below the ground surface. So, you know, what we saw was up here, and where they observed groundwater was down below.
Yeah.
So a lot of that stuff in every area where the infiltration systems are going, the one on the east side and the west side, all those materials that are unsuitable are going to have to be removed as the site's graded, so.
And that's rocks.
That's where we want to have some, somebody.
Yeah, just to make sure that the soils are conducive, as we expect them to be, to infiltration, and just make sure that the bottom excavations look okay. There's nothing unusual, no anomalies, or forest soils and things like that.
And you guys are good with that?
Do you have a question, Osprey?
I do. To Jack, to you. About the, under the site plan, about the status of Jabez Bridge Road. I'm reading here, and it just says that it was an existing road, is paved and utilized by the existing concrete plant located in the back of the proposed project.
Correct.
But the blueprints have been updated, and it's been removed.
The name Jabez Bridge Road has been removed from the plan.
Has been removed. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Maybe this might have something to do with what you were talking about earlier, but as far as that area being really dusty come, you know, the middle of the summer, is it possible at some point that we'd be able to run like a water truck down there and water it down so it would keep all the dust down? Because I'm sure that's a big concern with the cranberry growers.
Yeah.
But then again, I know that there's a concern where that road is shared by this company that's going to put this in, and the company out back, so.
Well, it's the same people.
Okay. So at some point, that would be something that would be reasonable to have as a condition to keep it down for the dust.
Yes.
I just have a question for Sean. On these basins where they may have problems silping up, is there some sort of inspection that should be done yearly, or is that written into plans?
They have an operation and maintenance plan for this system, so the owner will be required to do inspection. Of course, it's self-policing at the moment. But I think some of the different elements that are incorporated now, you know, they don't have full-width filter strips or those grass buffers adjacent to some of the storage areas or the paved areas, but they're, you know, they're 10-foot wide, and then there's four bays and things like that. So it's, the plan's got more elements in it now to help keep sediment out of those basins. And then the use of, you know, I'd suggest they use some sort of material on that road, on that access road that trucks are going to be using. Wrap was one suggestion I made, and the reality is, that'll help keep most of that dust down as vehicles pass back and forth. I know we've all been there. We were there for the site walk. I've been there. I know we've all been there, we were there for the site walk, I've been there one other time and had the pleasure of seeing the dust when the, when the trucks are going back and forth and I think this will help a lot and that wrap or that reclaimed asphalt pavement would be butted right up against with the filter strip and then the floor bay. So I think it'll be a lot better condition and the product storage is going to be out in the exposed soils area, but I actually think that'll help kind of minimize or help contain the dust a little bit. Overall, it's, 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 it's come along. I think it's been an improved plan, too.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
And then I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
And then as far as everything that's being removed off of this site right now, is, is somebody supposed to walk through and just double-check it from conservation or, I mean, you had a significant amount of tires and metal and everything that needed to be taken out of there prior to getting it going?
Yeah, that's, they're continuing to clean the site up and most of that.
I know they had it all contained.
Yeah, and it's, I don't think there's a jurisdictional matter with Concom on it. I think they'd be happy to see things cleaned up there and that's.
And let me be the first one to say that it looked awesome out there, everything being put together. I mean, it's significantly going to improve the whole entire area.
That's right.
Absolutely.
How have things gone with conservation? Have you had the final meeting with, and approval from conservation on this or?
Um, our meeting is tomorrow, is tomorrow night with them. They haven't presented anything that, that would be problematic to us so far. You know, we've been communicating with them, we've provided them with the revised drawings on last week as well, same time we provided them to you, so we think everything should be pretty consistent there as it has been in the past, but, you know, we, I guess we'll just have to wait and, wait and see, and see what tomorrow brings, but we have no reason to believe that there should be, should be a problem. The resource areas were fine, nobody commented on those. I think we have proper mitigation. As Sean said, we do have an operation and maintenance plan as part of that notice of intent as far as how that site gets managed, storm water gets managed over time. So those are the similar things that you're, that you're interested in, the conservation is interested in, so I think that we just let it run its course tomorrow and see how we go. We're up to very optimistic.
So if we approve these plans tonight, it, we still, you still have to wait for conservation's final approval or can we make it contingent to conservation? How does that work?
You can't make it, one board's contingent upon another. I would suggest if, if you're going to close the hearing and vote on this, that unless there's some drastic changes that we are not aware of, that everything's in order. Sean, you're okay with it?
Yes.
Does it protect the resources surrounding the project?
Absolutely. Just to protect them more than you do today, for sure.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, this is a public hearing and if there's somebody that would like to speak, go ahead, please.
My name is Mike Weston. I own three quarters of the way around this project and one of the questions I have are, is this going to be surveyed at all, this project, my property line compared to their property line or?
I think the limit, the limit of surveying that will need to be done will be to ensure that the setback distances required under zoning are met. I don't believe we will be intending to conduct a complete perimeter survey around, around the property, but where we have a building setback distance from your property line, that property line will need to be defined in order to ensure that we meet the setback. So in part, yes, but not in, it's not in total.
Right. I guess what I'm worried about is that one corner.
Sure, up here, Michael.
Yes, I'm worried about this corner here. According to Clark Griffiths, who I bought my property off of, that bound that DAF you guys surveyed it is under the asphalt. He said that it's a, he said it's a cement bound and when Dean Marramble owned it, he graded up to it and then when they asphalted it, they went right over the top of it. And I really would like to keep my bounds. I would like to know where they are. I've lost the back two bounds on my property, one to Dean Marramble digging straight up to the hill and deciding that my bound was at the top, it wouldn't cave and it did, of course. And the other one, when Robert Hour's company was grading out back, one of the bulldozers buried one of my, I walked the property with Peter Joy and one of the bulldozers grained, bulldozed over the top of one of my other bounds. So I guess I'm asking is if it could be surveyed where I could find that bound and, and make sure that where I own before it gets later on in 10 more years, it's like I'm starting to lose property.
Yeah, we can, we can survey it, we can get that point if the bound is under the pavement, we'll put a tack in the pavement.
That's all I want to know, as long as it's.
At least a tack, something.
And as long as that remains a private way, I have really no problem with it. If it became a public way, I would have a problem with it because I don't want to own into a public way.
Yeah, I don't think that's what the intent is, at least on our, on our side, and I don't know whether or not that could actually ever happen anyway, but, you know.
Does that?
We'll, we'll stake out, we'll, we'll stake out and ensure that we know exactly where that point is in your property line that's adjacent to the structures. We'll have that fully identified.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I know where the other bounds are. It's that bound that I walked the property and I cannot find it. And I went to Mr. Griffith and I said, I can't find this cement bound that you say, you guarantee me it's there. He said, no, it's under the asphalt. It's been tied over. So I would love to know where it is before the projects get so big that I lose track of where I'm going.
No, we'll take care, we'll take care of that. We'll work with you on it since we're adjoining property owners. Whatever we find, we'll share it with you. I mean, it's common to us, to both parties, so we're happy to do that.
I was sorry I wasn't there when you did the site walkthrough, but nobody told me there was going to be one, so.
Okay, not a problem.
Does anybody else have any, anything to say? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd make the motion to close the public hearing.
A second. Have a motion and two seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I, I, if you're going to consider approval here, I would suggest you have the normal conditions, you incorporate Mr. Martin's memo of March 31st, 2014 and inspections of the infiltration system during construction. Erosion control sediment, erosion sediment controls are in place. There's dust controls using water truck. Yearly inspections of the basins and the survey wood bounds are marked.
Jack, I would suggest instead of yearly inspections, that just follow the operation and maintenance plan that was submitted.
Is pursuant to the, inspections pursuant to operations and maintenance plan. Got it.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the site plan for Shore Precast, Clark Creek, 334 Tremont Street with the conditions that were outlined that Jack had put down as standard conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
And we have one recused.
That's right, Dad can't vote on this. You caught me, Jack. Thank you.
All right, we're all set. Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Talk to your neighbors.
Definitely, definitely. And I just want you people to know, our attentions are fully, I want you guys to come back in there and I want you to say, wow. I want you to see the landscape and we really have told Dennis, our general manager, our head company headquarters, we have it landscaped and we plant flowers every year and we, I really, we take pride in that and I really, coming into Cabo, I want people to drive in and say, wow, look at this, it's nice.
We do, we do too.
I want the people, you know, so that's our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, when are you opening?
Thursday.
You keep pushing it back.
It's the original date.
You're killing me.
I'm just, I'm a silent.
I won't turn away to nothing.
I'm silent there, I'm just.
You have nothing to do with it.
I'm the wife's boss, yeah. And his father-in-law.
Good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Bye-bye, thank you.
All right, under old business, we have a, we have a discussion and possible endorsement for Jamie Emerson. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, good night.
This was the retreat lot that the ZBA approved. You were actually ready to approve it the last time and I stopped you because it wasn't on the agenda. So I don't know if you had any other questions. I told Mr. Serkey he could leave. That's why he was here.
Oh, this was the lot that, yeah.
They changed it.
Yeah, that they bought the additional property.
They bought it, they got the ZBA approval.
Okay.
And we did have a condition on it that, that it couldn't be built on, right?
It's right here, not to be considered a buildable on to itself. So I'd like to make, make my motion to endorse like I did before, but now I can't do that.
God bless you.
God bless you.
All right, so we have a motion to endorse the plan for 85 Center Street. Uh, we have a second?
Second.
And you have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
So that was unanimous.
We can sign these, Kathy, right? Kathy.
Matter of fact, Kathy K, why don't we, if you could run up, do we need to change the decision? Maybe you can do that and I'll organize the formative design.
But I think there were other things to add that, um.
Just, we'll talk.
All right.
Sorry, sorry. That's what we do here.
Okay, the next under old business is the review of the planning board fee schedule, discussion and possible vote.
As you know, the town administrators asked all the departments, all the boards and commissions to look at their fee schedule, analyze it using surrounding neighborhoods and come back with a recommendation. I didn't realize how quickly he wanted that recommendation. He approached me last Tuesday and I said, well, we've looked at it, but the board's not prepared to vote till April 1st. And he said, well, what do you think? I had to tell him the truth. We're high, we're still high. I mean, maybe we're, they're catching up a little bit, but I told him I would recommend and I will make this recommendation that we stay on path with our fees.
Mr. Chair, I got, I have to agree with Jack's synopsis. Looking at the fees, I know when we had done this.
2008.
Quite a while ago. There, it was a pretty good increase, but then again, back then, things will happen. I think with the, with the way that things are changing now, the economy's starting to come back a little bit, there's a good potential for Cabo to be cool and get some good development in town. And we are still quite high. If you look at the spreadsheet that Jack and the, actually the interns and staff had done, you can see that we're, we're pretty high. So I mean, to increase it again is just, in my opinion, just, just too severe. So I would, I would recommend that, in my opinion, that we don't do anything but leave, leave Pat, maybe revisit it a couple of years or something like that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, when do you usually revisit these type of things?
In the, in the nine years and almost 10 years that I've been on the planning board. I think we've done it twice, maybe three times. Obviously, last, last time we did it in '08, things were happening. We haven't looked at it in quite a while because.
Things have been very slow.
There hasn't been that much building in town or anything like that. I know, I know that we're sitting here and going through different applications and everything, some people do complain about, you know, this fee's way too high or this is too much and in other towns it's that, but this is what the board had approved back in '08. If you look at the schedule, I think that, you know, people are either, A, catching up to Cabo or, you know, some people are higher on different things than what we are, but I don't want to be too drastic on the potential on getting some good development. It's always, I've always felt that, you know, it is a cost to doing business when applicants come in, whether it's Shore Precast or Borregas Solar, it is a cost of doing business. They know that they have to spend some money with the local level and sometimes at the state level on fees and applications and engineering, it is a cost. So not to be over extravagant, make a first, but I think, I think we'll do. We can always look at it again in a couple of years.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we should do. Anybody else have any, any comments?
No, I agree.
I agree. Yeah, yeah, I, I hate to discourage people from, from doing anything here, bringing business into, into Cabo because of, you know, the, the high prices of fees and, and doing business here, so may, maybe if we could revisit this in a couple of years and, and see how the economy's picked up and, but if we're on the high end of the scale now, uh, yeah, just don't think it's a good thing to do right now.
I think in the long run, it'll, it'll benefit the town in the long run. I mean, right now, I understand what the town administrator's looking at, every little bit being new to the town and where our finances are and, you know, where we, we're in some tough times right now in the town of Cabo. I think he's doing his job and he's trying to look at every little angle that we can get to, whether it's a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there, but in the long run, I think by not holding pat with our fee schedule as it is today, if we do get development, which we know we're going to get some, there is activity happening in town. The benefit that the town's going to get in taxes and jobs and revenue will way outweigh increasing 2%, 3% hard fees. And I think that 2% or 3% at, at this level, for us, we discourage some people when they could just go to Middlemore or they could go to Plymouth, even though that a lot of Plymouth is built up, but they still have opportunity there, or Kingston, or Plumpton. So that's my opinion. I, I understand what he's trying to do, but I think it's the wrong time for us anyways.
We have a lot of larger businesses that are coming in, but we still have a lot of smaller businesses and, and that are just getting by and I know that we've had even complaints about fees for signs and applications and, and for those small people, it's, it's still difficult to come up with that kind of money, so.
You know, and that's a good point that you bring, Mr. Chair. You know, we had Mr. Allegrini from Signs and Designs in here a couple of times and, you know, he, he made a very good, clear case last time of, you know, this is, you know, expensive for his customer.
For a small customer, yeah.
And I can understand that for a small customer like that, that is an expense. I, I struggle with that as a board member on, and also being a, a small business owner, you know, of expenses that you have to spend for, to make a living. And sometimes it hurts, but in the long run, it comes back.
Yeah, I think in this particular case, we're actually talking about an engineering company coming into town, establishing an office. They don't have goods to sell, they're not, they don't have a big building and they have to wait and see if they're going to have clients to come in the door, so just to set up their office is expensive, so. Maybe we can revisit this.
So I'd like to, I, I think we, in my opinion, we should take a motion not to take any action at this time on our fee schedule. And I'd like to make that motion not to take any action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was unanimous.
Kathy, too.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, under other business, we have planning board notes. Anybody, anybody would like to have anything to say on the planning board notes this evening?
I'm good. Nice to see Chad's back. Nice to see he's doing good. Seems like we're, we're one-legged banded here. The book ends, but nice to see you back.
Thank you. All right, let's go to planners' notes.
Only a couple of things. At your next meeting, you're going to have MBO Precast submit. Do you remember I showed you how they want, they have a lease to buy the aggregate property? They made some of the changes they wanted, you wanted on, on the sketch that they did on how they would put the materials there and he just needed to get permission from aggregate on what he's doing and he called me today, or yesterday, actually, and told me he now has that, so he'll be officially submitting for your next meeting and that'll be a minor modification.
That's actually encouraging, that's, that's a good decision.
And I should add, I didn't write this down and the whole reason he's doing this is to free up that lot. And he told me. to free up that lot, and he told me, and I don't think I'm at liberty to divulge who, but they are very close to an agreement on that front lot, very close.
That's great.
He was very excited about that.
Very good.
Solar Circle, Solar Circle is on High Street, almost into Kingston, it's a little two, a three-lot subdivision, and in the back is the McGrath property, it's a huge piece of property that the DDC has been looking at for a long time now. They look like they're gonna be coming in with a solar project. They have gotten permission from the town of Plumpton for a landlocked piece to have solar on it, and now they wanna come into Carver. There's a few zoning questions that I asked them to get some legal advice on about setbacks on a budding town line, even though the property goes over. I believe they can do that, I wanted to make sure that I got a legal opinion from them, and then I'll pass it by K and P. And then they had some cons comm issues they gotta resolve and that kind of stuff, but I think they're work, I think they're pretty serious, I think you'll see them. And lastly, a town administrator told us today, we had a staff meeting, that he has decided because of a lot of these fee issues are still out there, let me go back a little bit, when Will was talking about the fees, he estimated today that with the fees being raised for a lot of the departments and commissions, especially the building department, that he is thinking he can get low-end $55,000 yearly at increased fees, which is pretty immense. For example, the building permit fee for Norfolk Palace, 16,000 square foot building, was $900. The average in surrounding communities was somewhere between $6,000 and $9,000.
That's how bad we were, 10% in some instances, so we're gonna see a, a pretty good jump,
a bump on that. And anyway, because of that, because of negotiations with unions, he is not ready to do his budget, or present it to the selectmen, his goal was to do it tonight, and he's gonna do it at the first meeting in May, 'cause he just doesn't think, he's got a very tough road ahead. He made a lot of inroads with the schools, he's still dealing with the unions, still dealing with what kind of reorganization he's gonna do, if any, here, but he's getting closer. That's kinda what he told us. That's it.
Good, thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes of March 18th, 2014, for a discussion and possible vote.
Make a, make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve as written?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one recused. All right, correspondence.
None.
So, we go to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You have a second?
Aye.
Show us, Mike.
Okay, that's, good evening.
Good evening.